I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
Sub move.
Oh, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 22nd, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine, zero. I need to announce executive sessions held October 20th, 2015 for personnel, other legal matters and to receive information, and October 27th, 2015 for personnel, other legal matters and to receive information. Staff reports and Ms. O'Rourke.
It is my pleasure to share the following items of good news with you this evening. As you may recall, we shared with you the names of the four National Merit Scholarship semifinalists last month, and this month, I have the pleasure of sharing the names of our four National Merit Scholarship commended students. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School seniors William Depudaloff, Amelia Hastings, Joshua Kimes, and Macy McKintrick. They were among the top 50,000 scorers on the PSAT, which they took last fall as juniors, but their scores were not high enough to place them among the semifinalists. While they are no longer eligible to continue in the program, they did receive letters of commendation from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation in recognition for their outstanding academic promise. They may be eligible to be candidates for special scholarships that are provided by the National Merit Corporate and Business Partners. Portraits of all eight of our this year's National Merit students are proudly on display at the high school cafeteria. We congratulate all eight of our National Merit students for their outstanding efforts. I am also extremely proud to report that we had 32 students named AP Scholars by the College Board in recognition for their college-level achievement in high school through advanced placement courses and exams. 2015 graduate Stephen Davis was named a National AP Scholar for earning an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken with scores of four or higher on eight exams or more. Ten students were named AP Scholars with distinction for earning an average score of at least a 3.5 on all AP exams taken, with scores of three or higher on five or more exams. Our AP Scholars with distinction are 2015 graduates Adam Ackerman, Joseph Beaver, Stephen Davis, Samantha Jensen, Aditha Krishanishan, Kelly Tambaro, and Vincent Tamaletti, as well as seniors Emily Augustine, Sean McLean, and Akil Rajasakar. Sorry about that, Akil. We also had seven students named AP Scholars with honor for scoring at least a 3.25 on all exams taken, with scores of three or higher on four or more exams. Congratulations to 2015 graduates Rachel Dodson, Walter Donilon, Adam Montgomery, and Jonathan Unger, as well as seniors Jack Brownfield, Zachary Kraska, and Christian Shemanta. Fourteen students were named AP Scholars for earning scores of three or higher on three or more exams. Congratulations to 2015 graduates Erin Copeland, Jessica George, Brendan Cale, Kristen Kohler, Emily Kucan, Juliana Leese, Shannon Muser, Tara Nath, and Caitlin Zerar, as well as seniors William Depudaloff, David Erdzen, Elliot Lehman, Macy McKintrick, and Joseph Watson. Last year, we had 30 students named AP Scholars, and we are pleased that more of our students are excelling on these exams. Eight Bethel Park High School students who wrote for The Hawkeye, the Bethel Park High School online student newspaper, earned 14 awards from the Pennsylvania School Press Association on its summer journalism contest, including five Superior Awards, three Excellent Awards, and six Honorable Mentions. Congratulations to 2015 graduates Caitlin Ellsworth, Taylor Scalise, and Krista Van Dyke, as well as sophomores Nathan Runja, Grayden Tomikowicz, Michael Harrington, Ty Miller, and former student Russell Fennelson. I'm also pleased to announce that all of the 19 Bethel Park High School juniors who applied were accepted to attend the prestigious Westinghouse Science Honors Institute, a 12-week series of Saturday morning lectures that focus on engineering and science, including a field trip to the Brazil nuclear reactor at Penn State. Congratulations to Noah Bissard, Peyton Capristo, Cassidy Chorba, Abigail Kalevo, Kyle Copeland, Adam Dembski, Riley Girkak, Jeff Hoffman, Delaney Lacy, Autumn Laird, Ryan Lynch, Megan McConney, John D. Majors, Christian Pao, Sarah Steed, Jessica Vayman, Heather Walker, Brandon Wallace, and Joanna White. Five Bethel Park High School musicians successfully auditioned and were selected to play in the Pennsylvania Music Educator Association's Honors String Orchestra Concert, which will be held in November at Chartiers Valley High School. Congratulations to Emily Kouser, Corinne Habestrut, Preston Smith, Janelle Wu, and Julienne Wu. Bethel Park High School will be hosting the PMAA Honors Band Concert on Sunday, November 22nd, and this year, 11 of our high school band musicians will be representing Bethel Park in this event. Congratulations to Josh Inashenko, Emma Daven, Alexandra DeRose, Carolyn Greiner, Austin Habashaw, Rachel Kinlan, Ben Light, Jake Listick, Adam Lucetti, Cheyenne Myers, and Joe Wasco. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School senior Kelsey Tichler its first Rotary Student of the Month for the 2015-16 school year. The Rotary recognizes an outstanding Bethel Park High School student each month for their outstanding commitment to school and community. Kelsey was recognized for her community service leadership roles at school with the National Honor Society and the Principal's Advisory Council for Students, as well as her work with the Bethel Park Chamber of Commerce to help the organization to develop a shop local campaign. She is also recognized for her work at our church to collect over 3,000 pounds of clothes to send needy families in Appalachia. KDKA's Bob Pompeiani paid a visit to the Bethel Park High School to present the Extra Effort Award to Bethel Park High School senior athlete Jake Dixon in recognition for his accomplishments on the football field, basketball and volleyball courts, as well as in the classroom. Last school year, Jake was First Team All-Conference in volleyball, as well as the WPIAL Volleyball MVP. He was named to the All-Conference Second Teams in football and basketball. He carries a 4.3 GPA and is involved with the Principal's Advisory Council for Students and the Captain's Corner at the high school. Additionally, he volunteers at Camp Aim working with special needs students, and he also volunteers as an elementary school reader and a Paramount Senior Living. Next year, he will continue his volleyball career at NCAA runner-up Lewis University. The Allegheny Health Network presented a check for $200 to the high school in honor of Jake's accomplishments. The Students and the Family and Consumer, Family Career and Community Leaders of America Club at Independence Middle School wanted to do something to let children who are coping with physical illness know that they are superheroes to them, so they decided to make and decorate superhero masks that they plan to donate to the Erie Shriners Hospital. This was an idea of FCCLA co-president Alyssa Webster, to brighten the lives of sick children. The students meet after school every Tuesday to work on service projects. This was also making, they are also making quilt pattern pillowcases as part of the 1 Million Pillow Case Challenge that encourages people to make pillowcases to donate to people in need. The Bethel Park School District extends its thanks to the members of the Rotary Club of Bethel Park for once again donating a copy of a student's dictionary to every Bethel Park 3rd grade student for their own personal use. The dictionaries will come in handy as our 3rd graders prepare for the Fourth Annual Bethel Park 3rd Grade Spelling Bee, which is also sponsored by the Rotary and will be held in early 2016. We greatly appreciate the Rotary's continued involvement with our students. I am also proud to announce that three Bethel Park employees were recognized by the Allegheny Intermediate Unit and Common Sense Media as 2015 Champions of Change during October's Connected Educator Month. Superintendent Nancy Aloy Rose was recognized for her vision and leadership to guide the district into a 21st century learning environment with initiatives such as the One-to-One Chromebooks and the STEAM Program. Bethel Park High School English teacher and high school instructional technology coach, Charles Youngs, was recognized for his efforts to help high school teachers effectively incorporate and utilize technology in their classrooms for his assistance with writing our successful STEAM grant application. Franklin 4th grade teacher Catherine Mucci, known as Katie, was also recognized as a Champion of Change for her effective use of technology in her classroom. They were recognized as an award ceremony held at the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. Congratulations to all three of these deserving Champions of Change. Bethel Park High School Science teacher Barb Isel received a $4,000 Innovative Classroom Grant from PPG Industries. The grant money will be used to purchase equipment such as micro fungus kits and pipettes to complete the lab on DNA, PCR, and the electrophosphorus in biology classes. The grant will also be used to purchase footbits for use in the anatomy and physiology classes. Bethel Park Food Service Director John Joe Consolmango was named the Manager of the Year by Metz Culinary Management, the district's food service provider. Mr. Consolmango has been Bethel Park's Food Service Director since 2007, and he continues to do a fantastic job of providing quality food for all of our district cafeterias. The Bethel Park High School will be transformed into Sherwood Forest as the students stage Robin Hood for the 2015 Fall Play. The show will be performed at 7:30 on Thursday and Friday, November 12th and 13th, and at 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, November 14th. Attendees of the Saturday matinee will have the opportunity to meet the characters and have their pictures taken with them after the performance. Tickets are $5 and can be purchased at the door or at the box office on selected dates. We hope you will come out and enjoy the performance. You have until Friday, October 30th, to submit a nomination for the Bethel Park Great Alumni Hall of Fame. The Bethel Park Great Alumni Hall of Fame was created in 2013 to recognize and honor Bethel Park High School alumni who have demonstrated outstanding accomplishments either personally or professionally after graduating from Bethel Park High School. Honorees are selected because they are either significantly improved the lives of others, contributed significant volunteer or community service, or achieved significant advancement in their professional careers. This year's nominees will be inducted on Friday, January 22nd. Nomination forms are available at the Bethel Park High School Alumni webpage. Thank you for taking the time to tell us about our worthy alumni, and we know there are many of you out there. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Student Government.
Hi, I'm Natalie Lalama, and I'm the Senior School Board Representative at Bethel Park. So, right now, SGA is working on an event that we're calling Wounded Warrior Wednesday. It was inspired by our Vice President, Grant Wilson, and he had the idea, we're selling wristbands and pins that say Wounded Warrior Project, and all of the proceeds are going to go to the Wounded Warrior Project, and students should wear the things that they buy on Veterans Day to show their support. Also, this weekend, SGA had a gathering, and we all got together, went to Trax Farms, and we carved some pumpkins to put in the planned centers and learning centers for the teachers to kind of get everybody in the Fall spirit. Thank you.
Great, thank you. PTA, PTO Council.
Hi. I'm here for the PTO, PTA School Council Board Updates, starting with Abraham Lincoln PTO. Abraham Lincoln Book Fair was held September 30th through October 2nd during classes and was available shopping during the evening of the Lincoln School Fall Festival. Thank you to the librarian, Ms. Paz, and committee chair, Sarah Hughes, and all the volunteers who worked together to make the Bethel Park Book Fair, sorry, Lincoln's Book Fair, another success. Lincoln's 4th Grade Events Fall Festival was held on October 2nd. Despite the rain and cold weather, attendance was outstanding and fun was had by all. Thank you to the hard work of the 4th Grade Events Chair and the 4th Grade Parents who worked to put this event together. Many of the Lincoln teachers decorated beautiful and creative pumpkins to be raffled off. A pie booth was available, at which the principal, Mr. Johnson, and librarian, Ms. Paz, and 2nd grade teacher, Ms. Smith, all bravely volunteered. Additionally, there were over 25 baskets available, and Lincoln received donations from over 50 local businesses and vendors for this event. Good luck to the Lincoln 4th graders as they move on to a bright and happy future as a class of 2024. Lincoln's 2nd graders had their field trip at the PPG Zoo and Aquarium where they had an educational scavenger hunt. Lincoln has been offered an exciting opportunity to partner with WQED and offer a math and literacy mentoring program that partners 3rd and 4th grade mentors with students in kindergarten and 1st grade to improve math and reading skills of both groups. The lessons will focus on recognizable PBS characters and take place twice a month. Thank you to Ms. Paz and Ms. Dowes for organizing this program for the students. Lincoln's music teacher, Mr. Bose, has created an Abraham Lincoln Elementary School website, and Ms. DeGregorio launched a new instructional support team website. Links for both can be found on the Lincoln PTO webpage at abrahamlincolnpto.org. Lincoln's Yankee Candle fundraiser and Bethel Park Apparel Sale fundraiser went on throughout October, and their Sarah's Candy Sale has begun at the end of the month. Memorial PTO. Memorial had a successful Yankee Candle fundraiser and kids' stuff book fundraiser and brought in over $5,000. Memorial had a Rita's Spirit Night and Olive Oil Spirit Night. They plan to have a different place each month, at a different place each month during the school year. Memorial's 3-day book fair is Tuesday through Thursday this week. George Washington Elementary School. On October 13th, the PTO sponsored an assembly of the Chinese Acrobats Touring Company. The Fall fundraiser, Sarah's Candy and Yankee Candle Sales just wrapped up. The students of Washington showed off their creativity by creating artwork that can be displayed and purchased on pillows, mugs, ornaments, art plaques, et cetera, through Square One Art Program. Last week, the students pledged to be drug-free during the Red Ribbon Week. Some of the activities included sock-in-drugs by wearing mismatched crazy socks, a minion reasons to be drug-free dressed like minions, and it's my dream to be drug-free and wore their PJs. Last week, professional runners Caitlin Goodman and Emily Gordon came to speak to the students. The Pittsburgh Marathon and Kids of Steel Program chose George Washington Elementary School because of their enthusiastic commitment to We Run and the Kids of Steel Program, now in their 5th year, to welcome the runners to Pittsburgh. The runners were competing in the EQT 10-mile race in downtown Pittsburgh on Sunday. They talked with the students about the importance of never giving up, encouraging others, and doing the best in all things. As it was also Red Ribbon Week, the runners talked about the importance of maintaining a healthy lifestyle and working as a team to fend off smoking, drugs, and alcohol. The students made posters to encourage Caitlin and Emily in Sunday's race. Today, the students at Washington wore pink to show their support of breast cancer awareness. On November 3rd, the PTO, along with the president of Wash, I'm sorry, the parents of Washington, will sponsor a dinner for the teachers during the scheduled conferences. On November 9th, Washington will be hosting a Spirit Night at Chick-fil-A from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. All are welcome to come, just tell them George Washington sent you. Ben Franklin. Ben, the Ben PTO is off to a great start after the first couple of months. In October, there was a Spirit Night at Chick-fil-A that brought out a lot of Franklin families, as well as a false Scholastic Book Fair, which was a huge success. Ben Franklin is in full swing planning for an evening ladies' night out fundraiser to be held at the Community Center on Saturday, November 14th. This is one of the largest fundraisers for Franklin. The October Spirit Ware Sale was such a success, bringing in over $800, that the PTO has decided to offer a follow-up sale with a delivery date before the holidays. William Penn Elementary PTO Desserts for Dad took place on Wednesday, September 30th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. William Penn dads and their kids shared an evening of desserts and enjoying spending time together. The PTO kicked off a character trade educational program this year by asking all students to wear a special color that coordinates with the trade of the month. The month's trait is fairness, and the corresponding color is orange. The students wore orange on Friday, October 2nd, to show their fairness. William Penn's Fall Festival was held on October 9th. The night was filled with a bounce house and carnival-type games. The 4th Grade Activities Committee provided the food for that night, which included pulled pork sandwiches, hot dogs, and breaded chicken tenders. There were beverages available to purchase. The PTO asked that kids bring non-perishable food items to exchange for pumpkins to decorate. The 4th Grade Activities planned a hayride and bonfire at Simmons Farm on October 16th, 4th graders only. William Penn had a Spirit Day and movie night on Friday, October 23rd, and showed Hotel Transylvania. And William Penn held its first Scholastic Book Fair on October 19th through the 23rd. And IMS PTSO School Board. Their apparel sale, they say thank you to all who purchased items during the apparel sale, and their items came in on Monday, so everyone should have them this week. IMS Craft Show is still accepting applications for the 2015 Craft Show on Saturday, November 28th, from 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. They're also looking for volunteers to help with the food 50/50 ticket sales and auction sales. Students wishing to get volunteer hours can sign up as well. Please contact Sharon Cave or Heather Fontana at IMS for more information. Popcorn Fridays started this past Friday in the cafeteria during lunch hours and will continue throughout the school year. Thank you to all of the volunteers, and look forward to more information on the following events. Bold and Gold 8th Grade, 8th Grade Fun Day, 7th Grade Social, and you can visit IMS, the IMS website, imptso.org.
Thank you. So exciting that Popcorn Fridays are still continuing at IMS. I used to be the popcorn lady to Mrs. Rose as my principal, so pretty exciting. Under, oh, Solicitor.
The Committee Report is distributed to the board members.
Thank you. And under Committee Reports, Mrs. Buckley, we had a Curriculum Committee Meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Cook. There was a curriculum meeting held on October 13th. A variety of topics were shared. It was very well attended. It's also being shown on BPTV for those who were busy that night and couldn't join us. And a very heartfelt thank you to all the presenters for sharing a wealth of information. Thank you.
And I think we're still gathering more information on a number of topics that were presented that evening.
Yes, and no further dates have been scheduled yet.
Were to be under study, and so stay tuned for another Curriculum Committee Meeting. Public comments on any agenda items this evening. Agenda items only. Seeing none, we'll move into business items and Curriculum Committee and Mrs. Buckley.
There are two items this evening under the curriculum. Would any like any held out? Hearing none, I move for approval, number one, Approval of Curricula, and number two, Professional Development.
Second.
Items one and two under Curriculum Committee have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on either of these items?
I have a question, please. As far as 2B, the Three Rivers Education Council Conference, I thought it would be helpful if we would share some information for the folks here this evening.
I'm going to defer to Ms. O'Rourke.
TRETCE is what the conference goes by, and it's a technology education conference that is teachers, presenting to teachers. In the past, it has always been held at a convention center somewhere with a hotel or whatever in the area. This year is the first year that it's being offered in a school, and we were honored for them to come to our school and ask if we would be the host of the TRETCE Conference this year. So, there's a variety of different workshops that are available, starting at 3 o'clock on November 3rd is a pre-conference, and then all day on the 4th. They're expecting somewhere between 500 and 750 participants in our building that day at the high school, with a variety of different sessions being offered. So, we're excited about it.
Thank you.
And we had a question. Could board members come and just walk through and see the?
I'm not going to stop anyone. You're more than welcome. You're more than welcome to come and sit in on a session or the keynote. It starts at 8 o'clock on the 4th, so you're welcome to come.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cook, I'd like to just say something. I'm on here under Professional Development because every district sends a voting delegate to the conference in Hershey for the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, and I get the privilege of going up there and sitting for three hours straight to listen to all the legislation that the Pennsylvania School Boards are proposing. And this was the first year that we weren't smith every piece of legislation that went up. So, our school district is one that has a voice in what legislation goes to Harrisburg.
Correct, and this board nominated you as our attendee. Any other questions or comments on these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are 10 items under Personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to have held out?
Number 10.
Number 10. Any others? Okay, seeing no objection, I move that we approve item 1, Approval of Substitutes. Item 2, Approval of Extraduty Responsibility Program. Three, Acceptance of Resignation. Four, Change of Status. Five, Approval of Furlough, Recall from Furlough. Six, Appointment of Personnel. Seven, Approval of Staffing Changes. Eight, Confidential Secretaries of the Bethel Park Voluntary Retirement Incentive Plan, and Approval of a Leave of Absence, number nine.
I need a second.
Second.
Items 1 through 9 under Personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
I'd just like to thank Rob for all the work that you've done, and we certainly will be missing you.
Thank you.
And good luck in that position that you're moving to. Any other questions or comments on items 1 to 9? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry nine to zero. Mrs. Rule.
Item 10, Ratification of the Bethel Park School District Transportation Department District Council 84 AFSC ME-CBA.
Second.
Item number 10 has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Spakusa. Any questions, comments on this item?
I have one comment. I really thank the transportation people for really giving us a lot they have over the last couple contracts, and I don't envy the position they're in. I mean, they give us good service, and we haven't really given them a whole lot. I, though, have to vote no tonight for one reason. I'm concerned about any of the contracts that we're entering into that are surpassing three years. This is a five-year contract. My concern is around Peasars because that has not been resolved. You know, it is the pension fund that's in the state, and they haven't decided how they're going to handle that. We're up to, I think, 30% math that we're paying, and looking at maybe you may have to pay more if they come up with a new plan. And my other issue is the health care because it's also in flux, and it could really have an impact going past three years. I mean, everything is so much in flux. That's my only concern. I have no concern with the rest of the content of the contract.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cook, if I may, I feel that I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place with this decision. My vote is not one against the bus drivers or the aides. I know your jobs are very important, and I respect all that you do for the children of Bethel Park. Having said that, however, after reviewing all of the data presented to us by our administrators, I cannot support a contract of this length, knowing full well we are still waiting for our lawmakers in Harrisburg to pass the state budget, and if and when they do, their decisions could negatively impact every taxpayer in Bethel Park. For these reasons, I cannot support this motion. Thank you.
The information was presented to us that in isolation, we would be able to afford this. However, in going five years out, I'm concerned, as Connie is, with Peasars. I'm concerned with health care. I'm now concerned with Act 1, which I'm now concerned with Act 1, which I believe exceptions are going to be taken away, and some other changes are going to happen there, and other rising costs in the district. I believe the parameters that were set were exceeded, and therefore I will be voting no, not against bus drivers, not against aides, not against mechanics, but rather a financial consideration. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mrs. Cook, can I make a comment? I am going to support this tonight based on the facts that were presented to us. The cost of this contract is going to be, from 2010 to the end of the contract, will be $172,000 less than it was in 2010. For that fact, I think I have to support it, and I feel that it's a well-crafted contract.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I may as well speak up. The vote on this is going to be pretty close, and the people are viewing this thing different ways. Okay, I think the contract is probably about as good as we're going to get. On the other hand, I do share the same concerns other people do. And the fact of the matter is, I made the comment last week, and I still stand by it, that whichever way the vote goes, whoever votes for it or whoever votes against it may be proven wrong by the time the five years is over. So please have mercy on all of us. We're trying to do the best we can.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Schubel?
If I may, I can't support the contract also. Mrs. Rule pretty much summed up what my thoughts are, as did Mrs. Buckley, and certainly you, Madam President, also. You know, for 10 years I've sat here, we've taken some very difficult votes, and this is one of those votes. And I just, I'm concerned about our overall budget picture and how this would impact that, so I would be voting no also.
Anyone else?
Yes, I'm going to be voting yes, more along the lines of what Mr. Means and Mr. Spicuzza said, because I think when you look at the details of the contract compared against alternatives, I think it's, I think it is a good long-term proposal. So I would be voting yes.
Anyone else? I would ask for a roll call vote on that one.
Mr. Amadis?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
No.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mrs. Cook?
No.
Mrs. Dobus?
Yes.
Mr. Means?
Yes.
Mrs. Rule?
No.
Mr. Schubel?
No.
Mr. Spicuzza?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-4.
Thank you. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Spicuzza.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I have seen two items on the Facility and Services Committee agenda tonight, and I get to do the trucks. How lucky can I be? This is sort of a bored joke about trucks, so if you think we're having fun, we're really not. It's just, it's an inside joke, I guess. I would like to move the following two items. Item number one, awarding of a maintenance truck bid, and item number two, purchase of a maintenance truck.
Second.
Just blanked on the name. Mrs. Dobus. She doesn't usually suck that size. Yeah, I blanked for a minute there. Items 1 and 2 under Facilities and Services Committee have been moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any discussion of these items? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Those items carry 9 to 0. Finance Committee and Mr. Amadis.
Finance Committee, we have five items on the agenda this evening. Would anybody want any of these held out for discussion? Hearing none, I move item number 1, October 2015 salaries and bills. Number 2, the September 2015 financial report. Number 3, budgetary transfers. Number 4, approval of the purchase of information technology equipment. And number 5 is acceptance of the donation.
Second.
Items 1 through 5 under Finance Committee have been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
Yes, ma'am. Matt, could you give us an explanation of the acceptance of the donation, what Brentwood Bank did for us?
The board had inquired with the administration about finding a donor for the IMS scoreboard that we purchased a few months ago. So we were able to do that with Brentwood Bank. They were going to just put a nice sign underneath the scoreboard up there saying donation of scoreboard by Brentwood Bank.
And that does cover the cost of the scoreboard?
Covers the cost of the scoreboard.
So thank you.
So we would like to thank administration for following our suggestion, and also Brentwood Bank for providing us with the money for the scoreboard.
Brentwood Bank remains a great partner to the district, and I think moving to them a few years ago was just a great decision on all of our.
Great.
Good work.
Any other questions or comments on finance items? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Those items carry 9 to 0. Policy Committee and Mr. Means.
Before I begin, I have a question. At the end, it says approval of resolutions 1 to 3. Is that correct? We're actually just approving the items under number 1, aren't we?
No, we're approving revisions under 2, and we're deleting under 3.
Oh, okay, they're all third and final reading. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, third and final reading.
Okay, I'd like to move that we approve for the third and final reading the items under number 1. Approve policy revisions for the third and final reading under number 2, and also the deletion of policy, the third and final reading under number 3.
Second.
Thank you. Items 1 through 3 under Policy Committee have been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on these items? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Those items carry 9 to 0. We are now at the point of public comments on anything you wish to address the board on. You have two minutes at the microphone. Name and address, please.
Mrs. Cook, my name is Joe Johns. I live at 2699 Bethel Crest Drive. I'd like to read a narrative that I had sent to the board in a couple emails.
We appreciate you sending that out in advance so that we were.
Sure. I want you to know, I mean, I've rehearsed this, and it takes me about 2 hours and 45 seconds to read. I was asking if I could ask.
We won't cut you off.
Two minutes and 45 seconds.
Did I say 2 hours? I knew I was going to say that. I apologize. It takes me 2 minutes and 45 seconds to read, and I have the latitude to read the entire thing. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Johns. I have lived at Bethel Park for 20 years and currently reside at 2699 Bethel Crest Drive. My wife Fran and I have two daughters enrolled in the school district, a 10th grader and an 8th grader. We feel very fortunate that our daughters are enrolled in a high-quality school district, and we commend the board on their past decisions related to upgrading our facilities and your management of the negotiations with the teachers' union. I'm here today to comment on a situation that I believe can be easily remedied by the Board of Directors. I am the president of the Girls Volleyball Booster Club, and have learned the girls' volleyball coach makes $2,300 less than the boys and girls soccer coaches and other coaches for identical seasons and time commitments. Additionally, I've learned that the amount paid to all Bethel Park coaches has not changed since the negotiation of the 2009-2010 teachers' contract. We all know that for all our coaches, it isn't about the money. However, my concern for our daughters and all Bethel Park student athletes is that our coaches may leave to coach at other districts where they can continue coaching the sports they are passionate about for significantly more, for significantly more money. This would be very unfortunate, as I believe our Bethel Park coaches provide very valuable lessons in teamwork, discipline, commitment, work ethic to our student athletes. I express my concerns to our athletic director. Although she agreed with my concerns, she is not in a position to do anything to remedy the situation because the coaches' salaries are established in the teachers' union contract. My intention is to advocate for all student athletes to receive a high-quality experience from a fairly compensated coach. I do understand there are two sides to negotiations, and recognize this may not be a priority for either side. As in the grand scheme of a contract negotiation, this is only a minor piece. However, I fear it would likely go unchanged if it was not brought to the attention of the board at this time. With that said, I'm requesting that the Board of Directors and administration work toward four initiatives prior to agreeing to a new contract with the teachers' union. First, establish an equitable salary scale for all coaches within the Bethel Park School District Athletic Department without reducing the pay of any coach. This would require an immediate but palatable increase in the budget. Second, produce this salary skill, scale at market rates. Our coaches deserve to be paid at 2016 salary levels rather than at existing 2009-2010 levels. Again, this would require an incremental increase in the budget consistent with the incremental increase in teachers' pay over the same timeframe. Third, we need to raise our coaches' salaries to levels competitive with other school districts. This would require a noticeable increase in the budget, however, one that is consistent with the contracts of other school districts. Finally, I ask that the Board of Directors support the administration in an effort to hire the most qualified coaches regardless of their affiliation with the teachers' union. I understand the value of having an educator as a coach. However, especially at the varsity level, knowledge and experience in the sport is vital to the success of a program and in getting athletes to compete at the next level. Additionally, if a coach is not performing sufficiently or is not providing quality experience, it should be the administration's prerogative to make a coaching change without litigation. Please afford our administration the latitude to hire the best coaching candidates available and make decisions for those programs based on what is in the best interest of our student athletes. Thank you for this opportunity to bring my concerns to your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Helen Hardinger. I'm a longtime resident of Bethel Park, and I'm sorry, I have some laryngitis. I've been talking a lot lately because I'm the president of Local 2972 of the Bus Drivers' Union. And as you can see, your negotiating team for administration has worn out my voice. We want to thank you for your support, whether you voted yes or no. We know all of your opinions. Your thoughts are well thought out and in the best interest of Bethel Park. What I want to tell you, though, is you made the right decision because we're worth it. The level of service that we give you every day, we feel is outstanding, and we don't think you can match it on any outsourced bus company. I also want to thank the negotiating team for Bethel Park. They gave us a run for our money, as well as the negotiating team for our bus drivers. I do want to thank, although they're not here because they get up very early in the morning, all the bus drivers of Bethel Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say a quick thank you. I want to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Directors, Ms. Rose, Mr. Howard, and Mr. Carrazzi, for the opportunities that you've provided me over the last four years. Since joining Bethel Park School District, at this same October meeting four years ago, I've grown both personally and professionally. I bought my first house, got married, had a baby, and received my master's degree. I also have the privilege of working with some of the best administrators in the business. I want them to know tonight, I wouldn't be where I am today without them. My experience here was invaluable, and I recognize the importance this role has had in preparing me for my new position as business manager of the Penn Hill School District. In closing, I express my sincerest appreciation for my time here at Bethel Park and for this worthy opportunity. Thanks again.
And we just bought you that new computer program to get rid of all those boxes.
Mrs. Cook, he'll be here on the weekends, making sure that is installed correctly.
I should have said I'm working on a transition.
Thanks, best wishes.
Thank you.
I will move into board comments, which, am I at? Mr. Amadis, am I at your end? I forgot. I didn't keep track last time.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Cook. Many times you, I like to say the same thing because of these positive comments that we hear during things, but so often during the news, you hear about all the negative things that are going on, and that's all we seem to hear. And it's evident when we listen to the report from our administrators, from the PTO, and about all the positive things that are going on, how well our students score. And I received a letter in the mail a little while ago, so I just want to make sure that we know we're doing well here in Bethel Park, but when I received this letter, it was from an anonymous source, well, semi-anonymous because it has a name attached, but it made me realize that it's just the first name, so I don't know. But it's from a young boy, and it just made me realize that in other districts other than ours, there are good things going on, too. This letter came to me, I don't know how they knew this, but it's to me for my service as a veteran. It's from a student by the name of Luke, and it came to me, 4th grade student. "Thank you for representing the United States well. You put your life on hold to serve for the United States. You made many personal sacrifices for the United States. The military assists with natural disasters. Thank you for brave and selfless, for being a brave and selfless patriot." Anyway, so I don't know how they found out that I was a veteran. I don't know how it came to me, but it touched me when I received this in the mail. I'll hold it up. I don't know if the cameras will be able to get it, but you and the audience will be able to get it. There was nice artwork along with it and very nice drawings, so when I see these things on our report here from all the good that is coming on, there's a lot of good going on, and I just wish we'd focus more on the things like that. So that touched me, and I hope it will continue to go. As for the contract that was voted on this evening, I think it's going to be in the best interest of the district. I know we have a good staff, you know, and I know it's going to continue to go that way. Thank you, Mr. Galeco, for the service you have, and anyway, that's it. That's all the comments for me this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen?
I don't really have anything except that I wish the state could negotiate as well as we do at the Park School Board.
Thank you. Mr. Schubel?
Yeah, real quickly, I just want to let the community know, parents and kids, both. There's a proposal on part of the PIAA. PIAA is the Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletic Association, which is sort of an arm of the Department of Education. The proposal is essentially, it's a complicated proposal, essentially it raises the classifications across all sports. What that means is the number of boys in a high school will determine where you play. Bethel falls into the top classification. The implications for the district are dramatic, in that we may be forced to travel great distances, okay, and also, for sure, we're going to lose some of our rival, some of our rival games. At this point, it's just a proposal. I don't think there's a whole lot of good that's going to come out of it, and I think that, I think it's something that the district needs to study moving forward. Mrs. Rose is on top of the situation, our athletic director also, Ms. Williams is on the case also.
Just a verification, that has passed.
It's passed.
It's no longer a proposal, it's passed. The only thing we're waiting for in December is an update as to how it's going to affect our season and what our travel will be.
I understand correctly, the structure is all that remains.
The structure, the basic framework is there.
Okay. It has dramatic implications for the district in terms of costs, in terms of travel, the loss of rivalries. I'm very concerned about it, and I think the district ought to be also. If you'd like further information, feel free to contact.
Ms. Shuniman?
Okay. Ms. Shuniman, or? I'm happy to answer questions also. My name and numbers on the website. Thank you.
Mrs. Cook?
I will start with PSBA. Some of the legislation that we looked at was, one was with transportation, they're looking at how they want to calculate the miles that are considered the home, from where the buses would leave to where we would transport other students. So that is an issue that's come up, and they're looking at that. Another one is how we do our contracts, that there was a movement, but it did get defeated, in which they wanted every aspect of the contract that you were negotiating to be out there in public. It will take you forever to get through a contract. So, but that got defeated narrowly, really. But those are the types of things that they were covering in the legislation. Also looking at how school board terms are in a lot of those types of things. There's a whole new movement out there with a lot of newer people coming on the boards that are totally looking at the school environment in a different way than we've been used to seeing it. So there are a lot of things coming up that, within the next year or two, that legislation could really impact how schools operate. Another thing is through the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. We had an audit report yesterday, 27 pages, an hour to discuss it, but I want you to know that the Allegheny Intermediate Unit is now on fiscal sound on the balance sheet. They just had to take a loan out, like all schools, most of the schools anyway, to keep the operation of the Allegheny Intermediate Unit going, but the interest rate, of course, you know, it's going to really escalate that. But at least they're in a good fiscal position as far as getting all of their issues that they've had with some of their programs. That's all been clarified, you know, cleaned up, and they're in good shape now. The other thing is that they did present to us the new funding formula that they have proposed. The state has, there's a group that met with businesses and with educators to propose a funding formula for Pennsylvania, for our schools. Of course, we're not going to benefit because we're not in a poverty district. Most of the districts that are smaller in poverty will be the ones who will gain, and it's because it'll be weighted differently. But they felt it was a bipartisan proposal, but we understand that when, some of them went. But they felt it was a bipartisan proposal, but we understand that when some of them went back to their respective districts, particularly in East, there's been some rethinking of their position. But the bottom line of it was, the proposal that they came up with, the biggest issue is they don't know how they're gonna fund it. Surprise. So that's still hanging out there, is how the schools are gonna get funded going forward. The other thing is that Steel Center had an increase of seventy-two students. They're the highest enrollment that they've had, and it's now seven-hundred-and-seven students. So they are really on the move as far as the number of students. Their welding program for eighty students is totally closed. They have a lot of females in the program, which is a nice move. Their meat cutting program that they said may have to be cut, it kind of looks like it will have to, although they had nineteen people enrolled, and every one of them already have jobs waiting for them. But it's such an expensive program to run that the school may have to drop it. We're the only VOTEC school that carries that program, which is sad, because here's you have a program where people will have jobs coming out of it. The other thing is that the, we had the legislative lunch at the chamber, and I want to thank Matt Howard for representing Bethel Park. We had about four or five other communities there, and he was representative for Bethel Park, so that put us in a good light. Dennis Daven, the Secretary of the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, talked about the types of jobs that will be available in the state and what the direction seems to be. They're trying to bring more manufacturing in because a lot of states like Pennsylvania have recognized that that's where the good-paying jobs are and where that industry should move. Talking about we need to look at educating our students to look at all options, because colleges and for everybody, and the jobs that are readily available anymore are requiring maybe two years or, you know, technical education. So he did say, though, that Pennsylvania, that we, even though we don't have a budget, that we are one of the states that really have made a turnaround as far as our economic position, and that they have several businesses coming into the state. They've come up with some programs that will entice businesses to come here, so that is one issue that they've really worked hard on. Also, I just want to say that the third grade memorial just loved their dictionaries, they just thought they were just the greatest thing, they had their own dictionaries. And one last thing, in our shop local program with the DECA students and our HOMEX students, they've made pet scarves this year for sale. So if anybody would like to have a pet scarf, they come in all sizes, we have dogs, all sizes, and they have sparkle scarves. So if you're interested, let us know. They'll be for sale for the holidays.
Wonderful, thank you. Mrs. Rose, you wanted to make some comments?
First of all, Connie, I know how close to your heart the vocational programs are. And I just wanted to say that over the past five years, we've nearly doubled the number of students from Bethel Park. So that message is getting across to various communities that there are lucrative employment opportunities, career opportunities waiting for our students outside of the traditional four-year college track. So thank you for continuing to carry that torch. I also wanted to congratulate Rob Galeco. Rob, you came here four years ago as a young pup, very green, willing and eager to learn, and you used your time here well. Rob's been a tremendous asset to the Bethel Park School District. He's been more than an accountant, he's taken an opportunity to learn the trade from the masters of Buzzzy and Matt. And, you know, when our auditors would come, Rob was the go-to guy as far as organizing all of the paperwork so that we had seamless audits. And I just have to say, he's gonna be tremendously missed. You've grown a lot in the last four years, and you are certainly ready for this challenge. We wish you very well. I'd also like to say that I'm both relieved and gratified that the contract for the Transportation Department was approved this evening, that we have five years of relative labor peace with your department to go forward. It's a little bit of closure for me in my last year, that we're starting to tie up some loose ends with contracts. But also, I think it's in the best interest of the community. The last thing that I really wanted to comment on is an extension of your decision tonight and your voting and your ability to come to terms with resolving issues and problems in the district. I've worked for a number of school boards, and I've never experienced a school board that can work so collaboratively and collegially together on issues even when they disagree. It's easy when you agree to work well together, but when you have points of concern and contention, and you don't see that in the public. You know, the arguments and discussions take place behind closed doors. But they are no less respectful in the back room than they are right here. And I should say, within the sunshine laws. Our solicitor is there as well to remind us. But I want to congratulate and thank this board for the way that you work together. It is remarkable, and it's rare. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spicuzzo?
I didn't really know we disagreed, I think, argued, I thought we just disagreed, you know. It's a great comment, though, I appreciate that, and I absolutely agree with it. Just a couple of things quickly tonight, a lot of really positive things tonight, I'd like to hear and see that. But on a much sadder note, a personal friend of mine, Kurt Lesker, passed away over the weekend. He was a great friend of Bethel Park's, lived in Bethel for a long time. He was, I would call him the father of Bethel Park soccer. If it weren't for Kurt, the recreation program and the high school program that we have today probably would not exist. And he certainly will be missed, and my condolences to his family.
Thank you. Mrs. Buckley?
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I'd like to thank the folks at Brentwood Bank for their donations this evening, that gives us some money to put back in to spend in another way with the kids. For all the efforts of the parents and the teachers and all involved for the PTO, PTA activities. The staff report this evening, thank you, Ms. O'Rourke, there's always so much wonderful information that's shared, and that's my part, favorite part of the meetings. And it's nice to see so many different groups of people working together for the benefit of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Means?
It's always nice to see all the awards and the achievements that students have, but I was particularly impressed tonight with the number of people who did very, very well in the Advanced Placement Test. Those tests are very rigorous, are very hard. It's a high standard, it's been in effect for a number of years, and it is really impressive. The other comment I'd like to make is I think the transportation contract exemplifies a lot of things that happen in this district. There was never an argument about whether or not we wanted to keep the transportation in-house. There was never an argument about the quality of the workers. It's always been an argument about what we would like to do versus what we can afford to do. And that takes place over many, many, many things, you know, equipment that we buy, curriculum, activities, funding of clubs and sports, all the contracts. And it's not that we don't want to do things, it's we have to have a balance between what we want to do and what we can afford to do, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Dobus?
As a board member, there were so many things tonight to be proud of in Bethel Park. Some of the things were mentioned already, the AP Scholars, the music, the journalism awards, community service, our food service. But I especially would like to take some time to thank the Rotary for donating the dictionaries. I think that's a marvelous donation that they give to all of our third grade students. I also would like to thank Connie for being our board volunteer for so many various... She wears many hats as our representative, to Steel Center, to the AIU, to PSBA, and it's truly appreciated, and you bring back such valuable information for us, that I'm very grateful for your service to that. And I would like to also thank the bus drivers, the aides, and the mechanics for caring for our students and transporting them safely to and fro. Thank you.
Well, according to some feedback I received, my board comments last month may have been misinterpreted, and I'd like to clear the record regarding them. I was in no way making any type of political statement, I was not taking any political side. My only side is with children, education, and the taxpayer. I encouraged our residents to write to their legislators in Harrisburg regarding the budget impasse. I should have also said CC the governor with your concerns as well. I only wanted encouragement sent to those who represent us in Harrisburg to continue to meet and to try to pass a budget. While apparently the General Assembly is out of money to make their payroll, and recently they were forced to borrow nine million dollars. The reality of the budget impasse is reaching the Capitol as well now, so maybe we'll get some movement. Other districts, schools, and nonprofit organizations who are being forced to borrow money because of the impasse are also incurring additional bills. Those are the costs of borrowing, including fees and interest. This should not be occurring. Spending additional tax dollars, but not on education or the student, it shouldn't be occurring. Ask everyone in Harrisburg to add those session days and try to pass a budget by Thanksgiving, a goal I hear some in the general legislation in the General Assembly now have. A few other bits of information that came out of Harrisburg include that there is a shortage of substitute teachers across the Commonwealth. And also that bills are moving that would eliminate the current Act One exceptions and perhaps add back-end referendum. So stay tuned for updates on those. I need a motion to adjourn.
Shall I move?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.